The regular meeting of Buchanan City Council order. This is our first regular meeting in quite some time, so I'm glad to say this is our regular meeting. As we normally do with our beginning of our meetings, we will have a moment of silent meditation and prayer, and then the pledge of allegiance. Thank you everyone for being here tonight. What a full house. It's really a pleasure to see everyone here at one of our council meetings. As we normally would do, is there any of our Wesleyan College students in the room with us tonight? Normally we recognize them.
No.
All right. As a tradition with us, we always recognize our Wesleyan College students. What we'll ask you to do is please stand, give us your name, where you're from, and what your major is, please. And point it towards the camera, or look towards the camera, so that your professors know you're actually here. Please, any one of you?
Hi, I'm Connor Dockrey from Derry-Ardent. I'm a business admin major.
I'm Laura Hartman from Virginia, and I'm a business management major.
I'm Jessica Engels from Preston County, West Virginia, and I'm an accounting major.
Welcome. We're glad to have you here. We're glad to have you in Buchanan.
I'm Brittany Radler. I'm from Riverton, West Virginia, and I'm an accounting and economics major.
So any other students? We're always glad to have our Wesleyan students here, and we're glad that you're in town and attending college with us here. Consider our time your time.
We're from Virginia.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't see any recognized guests or anyone that signed up to speak, but if there is somebody who did not get a chance to, I would now give you the opportunity to stand up and speak. All right, seeing none, then we will move on with our regular agenda, which I hope everyone has a copy of. We begin with our department and board reports, and we have Mr. Doss, our city administrator.
Yes, a couple things to go through in my report, and then I'll have a few items later on in the agenda to discuss. But I wanted to give you, since I've been on vacation and had some other things going on, I wanted to give you the financial report ending February of 2015. I want to report to you that year-to-date revenues, we've collected $2,572,786.89. We have expended $2,393,144.93, which actually is a positive difference of revenues over expenditures of $179,571.96. So far, we're meeting actually and surpassing our budgeted revenue projections, while our expenditures still remain in line with our budgetary appropriations. Any detailed report, as always, see me after council, I'll be happy to provide that to you. One of the main items on the agenda, and we'll talk about the budget as we go later on in the agenda, is Chief Tacy on Friday, last Friday, presented to council an opportunity, if you will, to acquire a used ladder truck from a fire station in Pennsylvania. He expressed the need for that truck, and Chief, I'll allude to Chief to speak a little bit more passionately about it. As you know, they've been trying to acquire a ladder truck for quite some time. This ladder truck new is about $1.2 million. The truck that the chief and fire department is currently interested in has a resale value of a little over $600,000, and the department in Pennsylvania is offering the sale of the truck for $433,000. Chief Tacy and some of his firefighters went up, took a look at that. There's still a two-year warranty under that, which I understand will transfer if we acquire the truck. The chief has talked to the volunteer fire department, volunteer firefighters, and they have contributed, and we have received a check in the amount of $17,500. State of, or the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania does require that anyone looking to acquire a piece of public equipment must put a down payment, if you will, of 8 percent. That equates roughly to $35,000, and half of that, of course, equates to $17,500, again, that we already receipt of from the volunteer fire department. It was the expression of council, an interest of council, to pursue this. So one of the things that we're looking, council's blessing on tonight, well, there's a couple of things. The first is to approve the city and the chief to write a check for actually $35,000, but the city of Buchanan's contribution would be $17,500. Again, the other 17,500 has already been collected from the volunteer fire department. So with your approval, we would issue a check for $35,000, with the city being $17,500. Then we'd also start negotiations to find an interest rate, preferably with our local banks, so we can shop local, to work out the remainder of the financing, which I think would be in the amount of $398,000. The chief is approaching the Upsher County Commission to ask them for a monetary contribution. The payments towards the debt of this vehicle would be an assisted payment portion of that would be from the volunteer fire department. The other portion would be from the city of Buchanan's fire department and general fund, and this is not uncommon for trucks that we purchased in the past. We have a really good relationship with the volunteer fire department, and a lot of purchases and acquisitions of vehicles and apparatus, they've always answered the call as far as contributing their portion of the annual or monthly payment on any piece of equipment that we have acquired for the department. Before I go any further, Chief Tacy, do you have anything to add to that?
I think you've pretty well covered it, Michael. Just to kind of reiterate, the truck's $133,000. We have applied for grants to purchase a new ladder truck. We've been denied grants, and getting smaller, smaller, smaller anyway. So the truck does have a market value. We've talked to the subrepresentatives, told us that truck has a market value of $650,000 if they had it were to sell it. A new truck is about $1.2, $1.3 million to equal what we have. This truck is, pretty much mirrors what we have. And so we can buy this at savings of about $800,000. We've struggled and struggled. Anytime we've ever made a purchase or doing long-term planning, how are we going to cover the expense of a ladder truck? How are we going to cover the expense of a ladder truck? And for the last few purchases, historically, it's always kind of got to the point where we've had to buy something. This truck is eight years old, and that's a very, very small part of its life. It still has a lot of serviceable life left in it. That's a 30-plus-year vehicle, so it'll make, if it makes any further acquisitions, it'll make our financing process go easier as we continue down the road the next five, 10 years. We've overlooked that. It does have a two-year, it's got a two-year warranty that will be extended from something they've agreed to cover that for us. I guess I've covered everything. If you have field any questions, if you have them, it's a very nice truck, it'll help this community greater.
What's your estimate of the condition of the truck?
It's, out of a 10, it's probably nine and a half. It's immaculate.
The truck that you currently have right now, Mitch, what will that bring as far as?
We've been told by the companies that made the truck, that probably if we sell on the open market, 50-ish somewhere.
And Michael, what is your anticipation as far as a 10 or 20 year?
We would look at 10-year terms.
10-year terms.
10-year terms, yes. And building upon that, again, if council's desire is to go forward with this, we would be essentially borrowing about $398,000. Of course, obviously, the down payment on that would cut that balance down to the 398. It'd also be our anticipation that if we were able to receive any funds from the Upsher County Commission, and then obviously the resale of the existing truck would be applied to the loan to help get that down and eliminate, or alleviate some of that, some of those years, if you will, off of that payment. Those are things that we won't know until we've actually acquired the truck, but certainly any funds that we receive from the commission, or any funds from the sale of the current vehicle would go against the loan. So if it's council's pleasure, I guess the thing that I'm looking from official capacity is to authorize the city of Buchanan to issue a check in the amount of $35,000 for the down payment of the ladder truck, again, with the understanding that the city of Buchanan would actually be contributing $17,500, and then authorize the city of Buchanan to pursue financing for the remainder of the balance.
I have another question also. What is your annual utilization of a ladder truck?
Yield to the chief.
I'm sorry, Dave.
What's the historical annual utilization of a ladder truck? How often do you have to have something?
Well, we responded on all structure fires, all commercial alarms, we try to respond when the manpower is available. To be quite honest, the truck that we have is 1986 model, and we're hesitant about using it sometimes, any more than we absolutely have to, just because it's 1986, it's a maintenance problem. We put a lot of money in it, and it's every year, it's just something, just seems to run a cycle, Dave, to add repairs to it.
And this will help maintain our ISO rates?
It will give, it will help, it will actually, we should get more points on our ISO rating. The last time our ISO rating was conducted, we didn't get a lot of points for the ladder truck. We should, this will hopefully give us a few extra points just because of its age and its condition. And just so far, it stands, the volunteer fire department agreed to pay for half the purchase, so everybody's getting a new ladder truck for about $200,000. So when you, when you talk about that versus, you know, three, four years down the road, I'm standing here in front of you, or whomever it is, talking about $1.3 million. Everybody's getting the fire truck for about $200,000.
How often do you have the ladder truck inspected?
Every year. Every year.
And you've had a lot of repairs on the ladder part?
About two years ago, we put about $20,000 in. We had to put a hydro motor in it, which is a motor that controls the turntable, and all the electronics, ladder trucks are electronic nightmares to begin with. But the ladder, it passed its certification last year, but you're required to have it tested and certified every year.
Any other questions for Chief Tacy, or for Michael Doss? All right, then I would entertain a motion from the council. If they so choose to approve the truck acquisition, the motion would mean $35,000 check from the city of Buchanan, understanding that $17,500 would be returned from an outside source with a total of $398,000 for the total acquisition.
I would make that motion.
I have a motion for Mr. Pugh. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mrs. Kupari. Any discussion on that? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries.
Congratulations.
All right.
Go get your truck now.
We have Chief Gregory from the police department.
We don't have a whole lot to report on tonight. We are staying very steady with a number of things. We are in the midst of our citizens' police academy, as I've covered on the last couple of times. Very pleased with the turnout this year. Had a lot of interested folks. From this group, we do anticipate there are at least four of the members who are going to be VIPs afterwards, and with the potential of two or three more on top of that, that have expressed interest in our thinking about it at this point. So that should bring our numbers very close, if not exceeding double digits, as we progress into the strawberry festival. Speaking of the strawberry festival, we're already gearing up with meetings, planning meetings with other public safety agencies in the Upsher OEM, and beginning to have our strategy meetings met this week, and will continue to do so regularly until the strawberry festival. And that's all I have tonight, unless there are questions.
Any questions for Chief Gregory?
That was a record.
I'm sorry?
That was a record.
That was. Do you like that?
How many people in our class?
I think the, it's flexible. This is, we've had it for three weeks, but I think it's around 16. We're actually picking up two new ones. Couple folks asked if a steward to join us, and I would certainly love to have you, and we're going to pick up two new ones next week. I think that brings us to 16 or 17.
Congratulations on your academy. Great job.
Appreciate it.
Mayor, you will need to have Michael authorized to, before you go any farther with that fire truck, authorize him to negotiate those rates and to sign the paperwork. Thanks a lot.
Okay. Chief, anything else?
Yes, sir.
All right. Backtracking, thank you, David, for that. I would entertain, to amend the motion that we also allow Mr. Doss to negotiate the rates and the acquisition of the truck.
I believe since I made it, I will ask that we amend the motion to allow Mr. Doss to sign papers for the loan and everything.
Thank you.
Second, Madam.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. While we're at it, then, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Doss concerning his budget report? All right, then, thank you very much. We have Tom with the water department. Tom Landis.
Good evening. Good evening. How are you? I have to say right up front that Kelly and his crew are very happy to see that dirt out there. It's been a long hard winter for them, the snow and the freezing weather. As you can imagine, it creates issues that they deal with very well. But as a result of the weather in January, February, there were two main breaks, one on Park Street, one on North Canal Street. They spent a lot of time with freeze-ups, the customer complaints, no water, of course, all of that usually requires a pull on the meter, checking the meters, for service at the meter, and then assisting the customer as is required or as needed. They did two services. They did a two-inch domestic and a four-inch fire service at the Pringle House. They spent a lot of time on Route 20 with the contractors putting in a fiber optic cable. There were some issues of them crossing over our water line, and Kelly had to be quite vigilant to make sure that they followed the agreements. And a couple of times, we've had to pull them to a stop, and pull them off to the side, and renegotiate, remind them what their negotiating deal was. So they spent a lot of time doing that, and due to the weather, they had to double up manpower-wise a lot of times, just to keep the meter reading done. And I'd already mentioned, there were several freeze-ups. He would like to announce that hydrant flushing will tentatively begin April the 20th. That's our normal spring hydrant flushing of the system. Right now, we plan on doing that April 20th. On my side, I would like to report the, our source water protection plan. We're well ahead of most utilities in the state, according to the Bureau of Public Health, and where we're at, at the last water board meeting, we announced, we had, actually had a meeting March the 16th here at City Hall. We were very pleased with the turnout at that meeting. At that meeting, we informed those in attendance about our emergency communication plan, our best effort, how we plan on notifying our customer as soon as possible, should there be a water emergency such as the one that happened in Charleston. So at this time, I would like to remind the public, the water customers for the city of Buchanan, we asked that you would contact City Hall during business hour, update your contact information, so that we have a current phone number, because the number listed on your account will be what we pull from in an automated telephonic message system. We will also be piggybacking that with a Nixle, if you want to sign up for a Nixle account, and that will be piggybacked to a Facebook account with the OEM. Any questions on how to sign up to those accounts, which are free, there's no charge to the end user? Just call City Hall or call my office, and we'll be happy to assist you with that. Also, if you have been keeping up with the legislative session, very pleased to report that Senate Bill, the bill, Senate Bill 234, which is the desire to remove all public water and wastewater utilities from under the umbrella of the Public Service Commission, has cleared the House and Senate, it's on the governor's desk waiting to be signed. There were some amendments, we hadn't gotten to negotiate away some of the things we asked for, but our long-range goal is to get all public utilities out from under that, particularly under the rate-making process of the Public Service Commission. The amendment that was offered up to get the bill passed through the House, I believe you had to have a total water and wastewater revenue of $3 million or more, or 4,500 customers. But that did clear the House, and it is waiting for the governor's signature. And that's all I have. Unless there's questions.
Any questions for Mr. Landis?
I've got a question.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yes, sir. If a person wants to go and find out what they should or should not put in a garbage disposal, where can you get that kind of information?
EPA has a very user-friendly website for water contamination, or household suggestions on water conservation, do's and don'ts for a household, or for the, actually for the general public in general. And then they also have links on their site that would direct you to other places that would probably provide some of those information. The local watershed group, Buchanan River Watershed Association, could probably provide some input on that.
Thank you. I have one question. Where is Mr. Pugh?
You mentioned the Pringle House.
Yes.
What is and where is the Pringle House?
I'll have to defer to Kelly.
That's across from Crump. It's going to be like a retirement village.
Okay.
55 will be over.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Landis? Thank you, Mr. Landis. Take it easy on what great job they do, as well as you, Kelly. Mr. Rock, Sematary Department?
Good evening. And just like the water guys, we're really glad to see spring tomorrow. The day right now, we're glad to see spring. One of the two cautiously, we're cautiously optimistic that we are in open and good communication with DEP on our NPDES permit. We've spent a lot of time, we went to Charleston this week, we met with the director of DEP, and things seem to be moving along, but I will say, we're cautiously optimistic. We haven't settled everything, but we're talking, which is a big improvement over the last two and a half years. We're actively engaged on the Tucker Street storm sore project. In fact, we're probably two-thirds of the way done with that project as far as pipeline. I'd say another 10 days of good weather, and we'll be finished with the pipeline part of that. Then we're going to move to Lincoln Street and do an upgrade on three or four houses and the Episcopal Church on Canal Street, and do some repairs there that we need to be We have, we've had several, we've had problems with flooding issues. We've had a few basements in town. We had a few sewer complaints, things that are pretty hard to deal with when the river's at 30 feet. You can't hardly do anything about the river coming up in people's basements, but we try. We got several yards to repair that we damaged during the winter, that we are going to be actively engaged. We get some nice dry weather, we'll be out fixing yards, and folks need to be patient. We'll get there, we'll repair their yards. At the plant, we're finishing up on our grit project, and we kind of think, we've talked to the mayor, we kind of think we ought to have an open house and invite particularly council, or anybody that is interested in coming to see some of the improvements that have been done at the plant. These guys have done a great job in there, and we want to kind of show that off. So we'll keep you all informed on that, but I don't have a date for that yet.
Will there be food?
At the sewage treatment?
At the sewage treatment plant. You're all welcome to come down there. I'm sure you all want to come, so we'll save room for you. I don't have a date for that, because again, with the weather changing, there are so many things that are on the back burner, but we're very close. It's not a lot of work to do, but we're doing other things that we need to get done too. It won't be too long. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Rock? Thank you, Mr. Rock. And I'm looking forward to the open house.
You are too. All right.
David McCauley, city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. I'll try to make up for these lollygagging supervisors who didn't have the time to be being extra lengthy, but I just have a few updates to supplement the memos that we provided to last Friday. Sutton Lake franchise, we're about done with the franchise agreement. You'll have that in front of you, I believe, in April. I'm still in the early stages of separating out the lease agreement for Cemetery Hill. Over the past 20-plus years, we've integrated the arrangement at the top of the head-end for Sutton Lake into the franchise agreement. We're going to go back to what we did back in 1986, and have two separate standalone agreements that reference each other, but they'll be separate. There has been some alluding by Mr. Brown with Sutton Lake, that Sutton Lake may be looking at another head-end location at some point, which if that's the case, we, you know, they'll move their stuff someplace else. So we'll see how that goes. The mutual aid agreement that we are still awaiting from Lewis County Commission, I've been sort of informally told that they've signed off on it, and now it's with the city of Weston. So we think three of the four partners have now executed that agreement. Perhaps as early as the next meeting, we'll have a fully executed agreement back with all four parties. Chief Gregory can tell you more about the continued good work of the partners. They had another investigators meeting last week, and this informational sharing is important to both the Weston-Louis County and Buchanan-Upsher County communities. Still working on the Lumos matter with Mr. Holland and Trader's Alley. Still awaiting the execution of the Deer Creek deed, waiting for the bid openings next week with the cemetery contract, and then we will finish that up. You still have before you, I would remind the council, the board member attendance ordinance, which was offered up in draft form three or four months ago, and I have another draft ordinance for you to consider tonight. At Mr. Doss's request, the council at the last meeting approved a reformulation of the distribution of the hotel tax monies. And without going through this at incredible length, the caption of this ordinance is going to be 390-something of the city of Buchanan. An ordinance one, amending the distribution formula whereby the city shall upon the effectuation of this ordinance retain 30% of all hotel motel occupancy taxes collected by the city to be expended by the city for those restricted purposes as are set forth pursuant to Chapter 7, Article 18, Section 14(c) of the West Virginia Code as amended. And two, funding the Upsher County Convention and Visitors Bureau Corporation, a nonprofit West Virginia corporation, with 70% of all hotel motel occupancy taxes collected by the city to be distributed by the city to the said Upsher County Convention and Visitors Bureau pursuant to Chapter 7, Article 18, Section 14(b)(1) of the West Virginia Code. And amending ordinances 235, 324, and 354 of the city of Buchanan, and establishing an effective date of ordinance, that is July 1, 2015. This would tie in with the beginning of the next fiscal year, as you know, under the current 60-40 formula, the projected revenue that would be realized via the city's 40% share has long been budgeted and incorporated into things like the city's flower project and things of that nature. So it wouldn't go into effect until July 1. I'm not going to read all those whereas paragraphs tonight, but I think one section that I do want to remind this council about, because the last time that we revised this ordinance back in 2010, three of you weren't on the city council, and you might not, four of you weren't on the city council back in 2010. So I think it's important that you recognize what the city is permitted by statute to do with its share of these monies. At different times, it's been 25%, 50%, 40%, now you're looking at 30%. These funds are very stringently dedicated. You can't buy a fire truck with- You can't buy a fire truck with these hotel motel tax monies. You can only employ them in a certain way. So they're very restricted, very dedicated. Since, I'm looking at Article One, the first finding of council, it'll only take me 60, 90 seconds to read this. "Since December 1, 2010, an allocation method whereby 60% of the net tax revenue receivable from the city's hotel motel tax was appropriated to the Upsher County CVB for the purpose of establishing, operating, and staffing the Upsher County CVB office. And B, 40% of the net tax revenue receivable from the hotel motel tax was appropriated by the city for those statutorily restricted purposes described and set forth pursuant to Chapter Seven, Article 18, Section 14(c), which restricted purposes currently include but are not necessarily limited to the following." And these are the eight things that you can spend that money on. A, the planning, construction, reconstruction, establishment, acquisition, improvement, renovation, extension, enlargement, equipment, maintenance, repair, and operation of publicly-owned convention facilities, including but not limited to arenas, auditoriums, civic centers, and convention centers. B, the payment of principal or interest or both on revenue bonds issued to finance such convention facilities. C, the promotion of conventions. D, deconstruction, operation, or maintenance of public parks, tourist information centers, and recreation facilities, including land acquisition. That's land acquisition for those purposes. E, the promotion of the arts. F, historic sites. And G, beautification projects. So those are those, those monies that you realize, if you collect $150,000 a year, let's just use a fairly round number, total hotel motel taxes, as you evolve to this new 70-30 formula, that 30%, that $45,000 of that $150,000 can only be expended for those seven things. That's about all I have this evening, unless you all have questions to me. I would observe that, I forget if it was Tom or Tim that mentioned the $3 million formula that was finally adopted by legislature and awaiting Governor Tomlin's signature. Ambi tells me that our combined revenue is about 3.1 million, so we managed to just squeeze in under the, above the threshold to not have to do PSC tariff cases anymore, which historically has been a royal pain in the backside. There's about a dozen different hoops that you got to jump through and it takes about four or five months every time we go to do it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. Any questions? I do have one. Article two under the filing of the annual ordinance to Mr. Doss. Mr. Doss, is that a public report or is that just something you get? Do you get it to council as far as the CVB shall continue to annually file with the CD straight out before August 15th? Do we get a copy of that?
The CVB, Laura does a report as the Director of the CVB annually.
I come to a council meeting, I provide verbal report, and then I also provide copies of our financial statements and then a paper copy of our annual reports.
And does that go out to the general public as well? Is that just?
It's available if anybody asks for it. I distribute it, I supply it for council and for commission.
Once it's received by council, it's public.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCauley, for your hard work there. Next, if you'll look in the packets there, council, letter of request for support from Almost Heaven BBQ Bash by Mrs. Light. Mrs. Light is with us, so, and I heard her this morning, so I would ask her, go ahead and come up and enlighten us a little bit more and the public on this fantastic event that we're all looking so forward to.
I appreciate the time and I won't take a lot of time, I won't be going in, but I'm excited, I have to admit. I shared this this morning, some of you have seen this and some of you haven't. We are real tickled, this is, they say, you know, I get them very often, I don't know, but we do have our official proclamation from the Governor, making the Almost Heaven BBQ Bash the West Virginia State BBQ Championship, and it's the only event of its kind in the state. Since then, we have become the West Virginia Cup for the Mid-Atlantic BBQ Association, and that covers eight states, so that's, you know, pretty exciting as well. And while I have it, I won't forget, Mr. Doss, I have you, there's our insurance, which makes the city of Buchanan additional insured, so y'all are covered too, just in case someone took care of that already. Weekend of June 19th and 20th, and particularly West Virginia Day, which is June 20th on Saturday, a lot of activity coming in. You've been seeing things in the paper, had one TV interview. Amazing support, and I hope you really will thank all the council members. Michael Doss, Jay Holland, Mitch wasn't here, but Matt Gregory was, Jerry Arnold have been fantastic. We've had some clandestine discreet, threatened their lives if they spoke about it till we announced it meetings, and literally gave them papers and took them away. I really did. They're like, really? I don't know how we kept that secret so long, but we're excited. It's a West Virginia Day celebration we have already. In fact, the funny thing is, it keeps growing, because I have had about 10 paid professional teams from West Virginia, Virginia, Maryland, Pennsylvania, North Carolina, Georgia's coming in, South Carolina, had one already in from South Dakota. And while we were sitting here at 7:15, I got another entry from a group called BBQ out of New Jersey. So literally at 7:15, that email came in and I got that. Some of the fun things, and I'll share that, because they had a good time with this this morning. Have any of you watched BBQ Pitmasters?
Yep.
Well, that's what we're doing here, actually. And we're actually working maybe to get one of the stars, Tuffy Stone, we've been in contact with, trying to maybe get him here. Tuffy Stone is one of the stars of BBQ Pitmasters. If you've ever seen that, that's exactly what we're doing. These are competition barbecuers. They look at this as their Super Bowl of barbecue, just like the football players would. These folks come in with $20,000 to $100,000 rigs, smokers matter on the back of RVs, and when I say RVs, they're serious RVs. They're very serious. We put up a $10,000 purse on behalf of the Buchanan Rotary Club is the primary sponsor. We're real proud of that. The event proceeds will go to Rotary Foundation's Polio Plus program. And the reason being, they just kind of came up with a thing this year. We've been fighting polio with Rotary for 25 years. We started with 125 countries, we're down to three. And we're determined to make it go away from the world. But this year, a lady in Australia came up with an idea called World's Greatest Meal to End Polio. And they've asked every club, every district in the world to do something food-related to raise money to end polio. Some of them are doing celebrity waiters, some of them are doing pass in the hat. And I've had this silly idea for about three years and it kind of bubbled back to the top and it's been embraced. Those of you who know me, I've worked at a lot of events with a lot of groups for a lot of years. Never had the kind of support with the media, the city, now the county, state. We're working with the Division Tourism, we're already listed on their account of events. Department of Agriculture is excited about it. We have already met with the CVB and think they've embraced it fairly well. Health Department, the cookers said us, oh, the health departments, that's your nightmare. We've worked with VJ Davis already two or three times and he's been very, very cooperative. Strawberry Festival we're working with to get the electric and those kinds of things. We're looking at, hopefully this is a really good family, community bonding experience, for lack of a better word. I think it's something that'll bring families in. We do have a car show. Jerry Pimple and his group, Classic West Virginia Wheels, is coordinating the car show down.
Classic Wheels.
I already get that. But anyway, Jerry's group is doing the car show down Main Street, and I just met with Hogs and Heroes. That was an interesting meeting last Sunday. They are a foundation that, motorcyclists, based in Weston, the largest chapter in the state, and they are going to do a motorcycle show, probably down Spring Street. One of the things in their letter is to close down streets for a day, but it's a day, it's just a day. We have a cornhole tournament planned in addition to the professional barbecuers who are up paying for about a $2,500 purse for the top player. We'll have an amateur Sunny Buck BBQ challenge. So any of you who think you have the good sauce, the good ribs, bring it on, is all I can tell you. So we'll get you signed up. Rotary Clubs are going to be challenging, in fact, I'm going tomorrow afternoon and meet with 65 Rotary Club representatives at their president's training meeting and hand out some information. So I think we'll get some of those. We're doing a kids BBQ competition. Seven-to-10 and 11-to-15-year-olds will compete in two divisions. The young ones will probably do hamburgers, the old ones will probably do chicken thighs. We're going to put them through the same things with cooks meetings. Mitch doesn't know it, but he'll be doing a fire safety meeting for the kids. Just a really good thing for them, and they'll be judged, trophies, you know, probably some money awards and some things like that for the kids. We're having a cornhole tournament, as I said. Buffalo Wild Wings is sponsoring the wing eating competition. We're doing a rib eating competition, it'll be a little different. We're going to have a challenge between the city police, Matt back there, the sheriff's department, the state police, and the, I mean, fire department. So we'll have a couple of representatives from each of those, and we're going to see how fast and how well they can eat some ribs. So we think that'll be fun. You can have bids too, Matt. We're working with the Arts, I believe it's the Arts Alliance, is that, am I saying that right?
Yes.
They're going to, we're working with them, we want to put together a sidewalk chalk park contest. Some very different activities that you've not seen here. We've had mentioned grease pig contest, you may see that, we won't discuss that just yet. A scavenger hunt around town, and our goal with that is to involve smaller businesses, particularly in the downtown area, they can get on the map, we can get people into their business to get clues, tokens, or whatever. And once they get them in the business, then it's up to that business owner to say, hey, give them a coupon for 20% off when they come back, or something. So we hope that'll involve a lot more of the downtown, local businesses, for people coming that day and beyond. As I said, we're working with the health department, the media, it's amazing, TV, radio, and I won't even, I won't even quote the numbers that they're throwing. They've come to us and asked to be partners, TV, radio, and the newspapers, and they're throwing some phenomenal offers out there for promotions, which will promote not just our event, but Rotary, the fight to end polio, Buchanan and Upsher County in the state. So we're really excited, I'm open to questions. We do have, I'll throw out some fun names to you. As I said, we have about 10 paid professionals already, three months out as of tomorrow. We have another 10 or 12 that have emailed me or called and said, we're coming, they just haven't sent paperwork in yet. But some of the folks that are coming are, my first list, the Pittsburgh Smokers, obviously from Pittsburgh, Big Block BBQ in Maryland, Handbones by the Fire from Virginia, Bone to Bark BBQ of Maryland, the 270 Smokers of Virginia, Low and Slow BBQ in Pennsylvania, Pulling My Money Muscle in Pennsylvania. You got to have, the money muscle is a part of the pork butt, that's all they care about. They'll cook up a piece this big and there's a strip this big. They cook the whole thing, slice that off, and that's where they get that, what they call the money, that's the money thing for them. And in addition to that, some others that have committed is Pirate 50 BBQ from North Carolina, Philly Blind Pig BBQ from Philadelphia, Old Virginia Smoke from Virginia, Three Eyes BBQ in Maryland, Drilling and Grilling BBQ in Pennsylvania, love this one, in Morgantown, the Saltons of Swine are coming. Pink Pin BBQ in Elkins possibly, Planks BBQ in Maryland, Perryhead Smokers, we talked to and met in Georgia, they're coming from South Dakota. And one of the fun ones that actually, if you saw the article in the paper yesterday, up Corkalips Now is coming, and they're from Virginia. And the gentleman there is the president of the Mid-Atlantic BBQ Association, and he was 2014 Team of the Year. So we have some very serious, very dedicated barbecuers. Yes, there will be barbecue. I keep getting that question, will you be able to buy a rack of ribs from these guys? No. They're going to take it home with them, they're here to be judged. But we are making arrangements. There will be a people's choice, so we have at least 10 or 12 already signed up, so you'll be able to, you know, you will actually be able to buy some samples, kind of like a chili cook-off, and then you'll be able to vote. And it's, you know, it's up to the people there to vote and do that. And hopefully we'll have some others that will sell some barbecue. The one thing I can tell you, the big thing about this is we are the only one in West Virginia, and they will tell us, the big reason they're coming is, a lot of them have never been to West Virginia. If they win here, they automatically get an entry to the Jack Daniels Invitation BBQ, when she said Lynchburg, I was thinking of, the Jack Daniels Invitational Worldwide BBQ Championship with one team from each state. That's it.
Wow.
One team. And if they win here, they go to the Jack Daniels Championship, and that's what they're there for.
What do they win? Do they win the Jack Daniels?
$50,000 is the top prize. And just bragging rights, really, is what it is. Anyway, they've already started booking hotel rooms, we're excited, we've got the hotels working with us. I think it's going to bring a lot of revenue to the community, a lot of excitement, something different. Appreciate Michael and everyone being so supportive. If you have any questions, I'll try to quickly answer them, because they've got an agenda to deal with.
Any questions for Mrs. Light? Mr. Thomas? Yes, Mr. Thomas, over there?
Comment, which?
What's the entry fee?
The professionals is 250 for the basic entry. If they want a larger than a 20-by-20 spot, then it goes up another $30 or $40, because it's based on the size of the rig. If they want special electric, like 50 amp electric, then it's an up charge. The backyard barbecue is 150, probably won't be any up charges for that. The Rotary Clubs are paying 150, the kids queue, we're going to do those in teams, probably around a $25. But we're going to grab out the meat, the grills, pretty much everything the kids need, so they're kind of on a level playing field. So if you have kids or grandkids.
What's the date of entry?
It's the weekend of June 19th and 20th. West Virginia Day is June 20th. And we will have, I'm working with Patty Adams and those folks, we know that they do an event, or they have the, you know, cake and such, and we're working with them. So we're working on getting some of the politicians in. I've got a call in, probably WVU President Gordon Ghee will be here, and we're looking at some of the other folks to be in town. So Walmart has graciously offered to donate cupcakes for everyone. I told them, figuring at least 1,000, and they said, no problem. So we're going to try to take care of everyone, have a good time, yes.
The Sunny Buck BBQ Challenge, the older people that's going to maybe be in the contest?
That's the amateur.
Right, the amateur ones.
Yeah.
Do they provide their own?
No, they provide their own meat, yes. The only ones we're providing meat for is the kids.
Okay.
But yes. And what will happen is in the, in the pro division, they will have to turn in four times. Chicken, ribs, pork, pork butter, pulled pork or sliced pork, and brisket. The Rotary Clubs and the amateurs will just do chicken and ribs. It makes it a little bit quicker and easier and so forth. It's going to smell real good in town that weekend. But just so you know, they'll be arriving, some of them on Thursday evening to set up. Friday, they have to be in, we have a cooks meeting at 10 a.m. on Friday, so those teams will all be in here between Thursday night and early Friday morning. And one guy's already said he's never been able to have anyone see him, because he's from Morgantown, so he's already says, I've got a ton of people making hotel reservations and coming down to see him compete. I think it'll be a good event. I hope, any of you who want to volunteer, help out, we'd love it. Rotary Clubs in it 100%, but, you know, we can always use some more support.
And who judges?
For the KCBS pro judges, we have, I have 20, I've got another one, 27 judges already signed up. You have to have one judge per team. We thought we'd have 20 or 25 teams, but they're telling us now we can have 40 or 50 teams with no problem, by being the only one in the state. Very few states in the country have one contest in the state. But they have to be certified, they have to go through a class, and actually, I'm going to be taking one of those classes, two or three of us at the end of April, just so we know a little more about it.
Another question. If you're, if you're a non-professional and you want to be in that contest, how will you know how much food to cook?
Well, that's the fun part, I'm going to give them the rules and regulations. Actually, okay, well, I'll make that easier, I'm sorry. Each item that they do, they do six pieces. So six ribs, six pieces of chicken. But the interesting thing is, when we went to one in Georgia, to get those six chicken thighs, a guy fixed 60 pieces of chicken and three racks of ribs to get six ribs. Because they, they go by the size, if it's, the ribs are straight, if the length is perfect, they'll spend 45 minutes to an hour just getting their little competition box lined with parsley. Three or four hours just to trim the meat to get it exacted. They will take the skin off the chicken, scrape all the fat from underneath, and put the skin back before they cook it. So just some real interesting little silly things, but we can give you those later, you got things to do. Any other questions?
Do you have to pay to be a judge?
No, actually, no, we don't pay the judges. The judges come in free, they pay all their expenses, and I have judges coming from Virginia, Maryland, a couple in West Virginia, and North Carolina, all over, because they want to judge these things.
Where's the school for judging?
The best thing you can do, if you go to www.kcbs Kansas City BBQ Society, there's a thing, it'll show events, it'll show team names. Our event is listed as a state championship on that, June 20th. It'll give you all those kinds of things you can, there are some around here you could do. We do have a website, almostheavenbbqbash.com, and a Facebook page, so watch, we have some other announcements coming, so.
Jody, I want to commend you and Mary as well on all the work that you've put. When you approached us about two months ago with the idea, well, you know you had a bunch of men in the room, so we weren't going to say nothing. We were going to help in any way we can. And I do believe the county commission has agreed as well to give to you a proclamation. The city will as well. We will have that ready for you as, probably by the next meeting. I also would ask that council take under advisement any financial contribution to this after we finish with our budget discussions, and if there's any extra money left over, that maybe we might want to be able to help with this, because we do believe in it and we really want to make this an annual event and make it as big as it can be.
Absolutely. We're already planning a year or two, I don't know why. We're going to brand everything with West Virginia, so all the signage you see around town will be, we're working with FFA and 4H and such, and everything will be the outline of West Virginia. So it'll brand, we're going to keep it around West Virginia Day so we can celebrate. I just don't think there's enough we do to celebrate West Virginia Day, and I think we could be, right now I'm told that this could be the biggest West Virginia Day celebration in the state. in the state. So, like I told the county commission, if you find some quarters of nickels unused in the corner of your drawers, we'd be happy to take those off your hands.
Make sure you inform them about Festival Fridays on that Friday night before.
We're actually, oh yes, that was the first thing we did, we've already met with them, and we're doing, the kids queue will be Friday evening with their blessing. Yeah. Kick it off, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, council, now noticing your packets were in the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes from a March 3 Town Hall meeting, and the March 13 Special City Council meeting, which had been rescheduled from the previous week. We have the approval of the building and wiring permits, and approval of the payment of the bills. Would anybody like to remove any of those from the consent agenda for discussion and vote? All right, hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll make that.
I have a motion from Mrs. Simons, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mrs. Alba. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Under strategic issues for discussion and vote, I believe we're going to Mr. Doss under the fiscal year 2015-2016 general fund budget approval.
Lot of business tonight, Mayor. You do have in front of you, again, the proposed 2015-16 general fund budget. We've had about four official budget sessions, discussed a variety of items, and those items are reflected within your levy estimate budget document for consideration tonight. A couple of notes, Mr. McCauley had mentioned the change, the draft ordinance in relation to the contributions to CVB and the Consolidated Public Works Board as it relates to hotel motel tax collection. That ordinance is married to this budget proposal of approved. If this budget is approved, then I would anticipate at the next council meeting, we would start the process of putting that up for first reading. I want to also note that this budget, along with including all the items that we've talked about for the last four budget sessions, this budget is actually a little over $200,000 less than the current year's fiscal budget. Don't get excited too much, a major chunk of that was the public safety complex and the completion of that, as well as some kind of mid-sized cost projects. So that's really something to report, this includes all the compensation discussions and the health insurance discussions, again, that we've had over the previous four sessions. So that budget is up for council consideration of approval and adoption. My recommendation to council to approve and accept and adopt the 2015-16 fiscal year general fund budget.
Thank you, Mr. Doss. I would entertain a motion to accept the fiscal year 2015-2016 general fund budget approval as submitted by Mr. Doss. I have a motion by Mrs. Alba, I have a second by Mr. Pugh, any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. We have in your packets, the appointment of a new board member, you have the interest from Mr. Scott Preston, you also have it from Kelly Arnold, you also have it from Mr. Keith Queen, you also have it from, am I missing somebody here? Yes.
Kelly Arnold.
Yep, Nancy Shoob, and Mr. Robert Osborne.
And CJ Ryland.
And Mr. CJ Ryland, or Clifford James Ryland III. Also, okay, that's good, hold on, so.
Lowell Smith.
I'm sorry, Lowell Smith, not Kelly Arnold, I got it stuck in my head, Lowell Smith. My apologies to Kelly on that. So I would ask for any consideration for the appointment to the Waste Board.
I would like to recommend Scott Preston.
I have a recommendation for Mr. Preston, does anybody else have any other recommendations?
I'd like to.
Should we try to narrow it down, is that the question?
I'd like to recommend Nancy Shoob.
Okay, we have one, Mr. Preston, and one, Mrs. Shoob.
I'd like to recommend Robert Osborne.
Mr. Osborne.
That's all, I must recommend one person.
There is quite a choice here.
I'm joking, I'm doing.
The best way to do it in this case, as far as the public forum goes, is we should go one by one at this point.
I want to ask a question to.
Please, Mr. Thomas.
Our city attorney. David, would it be appropriate that we deal with this in executive session, or not?
For what? I guess, it depends upon the nature of what your commentary might be, if it is to, if there's going to be comment about someone that would otherwise be embarrassing, or something of that sort, perhaps. If it's just to, for you to state who you think the best candidate is, I think that is probably not an executive session of matters, it depends. That's always the safe answer when you're not sure, is just say it depends.
That's a good answer. While you're talking. Well, you know, I would endorse, this is my opinion, I endorse either Mr. Preston or Mr. Osborne, I would not endorse any of the other three.
Okay.
And I have my reasons for that, and I think sometimes when you're dealing with these kind of issues, you'd rather deal with it in a forum that's not a public forum, you'd rather have it, if we have an opportunity to do it in an executive session, I would prefer that. So that's my opinion on the five candidates.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I have right here today's paper about open, Sunshine Week, open government.
That was my guess.
Well, whatever it was, open government, and that's what we're doing here, open government.
That's right. This is a discussion that should be open.
We don't like to talk about things in front of people, but by law, we have to. So if I offend somebody out there that's my friend, sorry about that, but, you know, you just got in my way and I had to talk about you.
Mr. Mayor.
Ma'am.
I think everybody's voted on somebody, and I haven't said my choice.
Please, what is your recommendation, ma'am?
Mr. Osborne.
Mr. Osborne. I think what we'll do in this case, as chair, I will go one by one, and I will start with who we, you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to go by alphabetical order. All right, so to begin with, I have before us, do we have a nomination, or I would entertain a motion to accept the, for the water board position, a Mr.
Waterboard, white space.
Cliff, or Waste Board, Mr. Clifford Ryland, Clifford whatever Ryland, CJ Ryland III? All right, moving on, then I would entertain a motion to accept Mr., let's see, in this case, that one's here, okay, that's him. Mr. Robert Osborne for the appointment to the Waste Board.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Mrs. Simons, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Alba. Any discussions on that?
Call for questions.
I have a call for the questions by Mr. Pugh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Mr. Osborne is our newest member to the Waste Board, congratulations. I know, I want to go Water and that, just after the Water name earlier.
There's one not voting.
There's one outstanding, who would that be?
Me.
Mrs. Capari? All right, so that takes care of that. In your package, you have the resignation of Mr. Mills, Terry Mills, from our Fire Civil Service Commission. I got to tell you, in the six months that I've been doing this, from the record to the mayor's position, Mr. Mills has been an excellent example of what we should have on our Fire Service Board. He has served for how many years exactly, Mr. Mills? From my records, it's about five to six years, give or take. Mr. Mills, and we're going to keep you in our prayers as you are being deployed to, am I allowed to say, is that a top secret?
Yes, not to say here.
All right, well, Mr. Mills is in the military and is being deployed, so.
Depeal tree.
We do appreciate the work that you did on the Fire Civil Service Board, you will be missed, and we are now accepting letters of interest to fill that position on the Fire Civil Service Board. If you're interested, please send a letter to the Buchanan City Council, or to myself as mayor, and we will make sure that it gets put into the agenda for our next meeting, okay? Thank you again, Mr. Mills, for all the work you've done for us. All right, moving on from there, we have the appointment of Mr. J.B., current James B. Kimball as the captain of the Buchanan Fire Department. The last thing that we did do, he passed his civil service promotional exam. I would entertain a motion to appoint Mr. James B. Kimball as captain for the Buchanan Fire Department.
I am happy to second that.
I have a motion by Mrs. Alba, I have it happily seconded by Mr. Pugh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. All right, next, we have Resolution 2015-05, general fund budget revision by Mr. Doss, sir, it's your floor there.
Not really much to report on this, this, we're about into our final leg of our final quarter of the fiscal year, and this is something that we do every year, it's kind of, if you will, a housekeeping item going into the final quarter. We'll probably have one more budget revision, we'll do in June for the same reason. Again, what you have in front of you is Resolution 2015-05, which is a general fund budget revision for fiscal year 1415. A few notes, we're not increasing our budget, we're not increasing any revenue, revenues, we're actually just increasing and decreasing some of our expenditures, kind of interdepartmental, so really, we're just shifting appropriations around within our expenditure line, so we're not actually, per se, increasing our budget and our appropriation amount as far as revenues are concerned. One item to note, there is an increase in the Fire Department, which will reflect, again, the $35,000 payment, which you all had approved earlier tonight in regards to the ladder truck. The other item that actually has decreased, and it looks pretty frightening, but it's not when I explain it to you, there is a decrease of overall $103,000 in the Street Department, have no fear with that, we, the two reasons for that decrease, one is the Gateway East, or the East Main Street project is complete, we have very few expenditures left in that, and we actually over budgeted that by about $69,000. I think what was included in that was the cost of our personnel, which obviously is already included in another line item. So we're taking about $60,000 out of that, again, because we have a few expenditures left, but nothing too significant. The remaining portion of that decrease is actually some monies that were appropriated for the land and water conservation, North Buchanan playground equipment, and handicapped equipment. We're still doing that project, but that project is actually going to bleed over into the 1516 fiscal year, and we've already appropriated those monies to account for that. So I'm taking that project and removing those expenditure appropriations, or a good portion of that, leaving about $36,000 that we still intend to acquire the playground equipment in this current fiscal year, and the $36,000 will certainly cover the playground equipment, but realistically, we're probably not going to install that equipment again until the 2015-16 fiscal year, and again, that's reflected in the budget that you approved earlier in the day. So that's basically the gist of this budget revision. Again, we do this every year, it's kind of a housekeeping measure, and we are not increasing our budget at this time. So entertain questions, but I do recommend that council approve Resolution 2015-05, general fund budget revisions for fiscal year 1415.
Council, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2015-05, general fund budget revision.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Mrs. Simons, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Alba. Discussion on that, at all?
No.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.
Let's take a roll card. We need a roll card.
All right, please call the roll, Mrs. Ambey. Jacob, Jacob.
Councilman Pugh.
Aye.
And Council Lady Perry.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Council Lady Simons. Yeah. Council Lady Alba.
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Jacob.
I appreciate it ladies. Okay, that wraps up our agenda items, now we come to the fun part, which is, of
course, our comments and announcements from our city council. We'll start off with Mrs. Alba.
Oh, I didn't, I just make myself a note.
Please.
We left here so late the last meeting, or the last two meetings, that I didn't see the lights until I really went around the block, come back again, City Hall, and looked down towards the college, and having the lights there at nighttime, they're really beautiful, so, and I'm very proud of our Street Department for completing that project.
I can't wait to see it in the snow.
Yeah, I'll wait till next year. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Alba. Mrs. Capari.
Only thing I have is, I just remind people that we are going to have fireworks in Buchanan this year, I'm chairing the event, and it's in the planning stages right now. If anybody's interested in coming and serving, or being on a committee, helping out in any way, shape, or form, come to my meeting this Monday at 5:00, here in the council chambers. We have a meeting every two weeks to update on everything, and I appreciate anybody that come, join in.
Thank you, Mrs. Capari. Mr. Pugh, I would like to welcome the Boy Scouts here tonight, is it 124, is that the?
128.
128, okay. They had asked me a couple of weeks ago if I would speak to them on this past Tuesday night, and I gave them an hour's worth of time for my choir practice rehearsal, and talked about city government, and what the city does, and what it means, and a bunch of really good questions from them, and I appreciate their interest, and I appreciate you coming down here tonight, and I hope to see some of you young gentlemen in government someday. Anything else, Mr. Pugh? Nope. Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Mr. Thomas.
The, when we think of board performance, I think that we need to give serious consideration in the future for having, have turnover in our boards, and I was thinking about CJ Ryland, I really think he'd be a great asset to the consolidated board, and something that, you know, I would recommend, and see if he would have an interest in doing that in the future, because I think he'd be an excellent candidate for that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mrs. Simons.
Well, I'm excited to see the city sweeper out today, cleaning up all the city streets, or at least some of them, they're scheduled for them. And I was also happy to see city workers at the city park, they are putting all the electrical lines underground, that'll be safer for the kids. And so that made me look forward to spreading it coming tomorrow.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Simons. I would like to make sure to express to all of you the appreciation for coming out tonight to the city council. I love seeing a group like this, it shows your engagement in your community, and it shows the importance of some of the work that we do, that lets us know that what we're doing is actually for the benefit, and that citizens are paying attention to it. We really appreciate that. I want to reiterate a couple of things that we heard earlier from our department reports,